Mr. Nigro?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Approval of minutes from the July 27th, 2020 special. And local.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Oh, my apologies, I have that here. Uh, Mr. Hudak?
Yes. And, uh, I need approval of minutes for August 3rd, 2020. That was already. So. All right. And local.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nigro?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Normally, we would have our executive session to discuss legal matters and other matters with the board. Uh, we're going to move that to after, um, the application to save time for this instead of watching via Zoom and also the professionals that are here. We just have, um, a couple of, um, do you want to speak to any of the resolutions?
Um, y- yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll go I, one and two, I guess. So, um, legal matters, one is just the Jackson Park South Section application. Uh, that matter was carried indefinitely pursuant to court order. We can discuss further, uh, as necessary in executive session. And, um, if I may, just to make sure my phone doesn't go off, but, um, just to segue into the one resolution for this evening, that's Resolution 2020. We may want to make note that board members here. Mr. Dolan? Um, Resolution 2020, that's an application memorialization of a resolution approving preliminary file major site plan with an alternative plan for, uh, the, what's commonly known as the Adventure Crossing Project, Block 300, 3001, lots 5, 6, 19, and 20 off of Monmouth Road. Uh, the board will be, we recall that the applicant ultimately had a, made two alternate proposals. The first proposal included two warehouses and an indoor recreation building, and the other proposal was for three warehouse buildings.
Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Any changes to the agenda or schedule? No. Okay, let's get a vote on the resolution. Is everybody prepared to vote on, um, Block 10401, 17802, lots 5.04, 5.02? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading.
Yeah, it's.
Block 3001, lots 5, 6, 19, and 20, Adventure Crossing Phase 2. So, everybody prepared to, um, vote on that? Yes? Okay. Somebody care to make a motion? All right. Then we'll.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, moving on, um, we have our first application, which is Block 6501, Lot 4203, Safe Store Land Company LLC. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Cleve, you can just lead off, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Uh, the applicant's proposing to construct a three-story, uh, 140,000-square-foot mini warehouse, self-storage facility, including a 675-square-foot business office, um, on, on the subject property. The application is compliant with all specific requirements of the HC Highway Commercial Zoning District, um, although it is listed as a conditional use. So, some initially, some testimony from the applicant regarding compliance with, um, the, uh, conditional use, uh, standards, uh, just to make sure that he's at the right board. Uh, we have a letter of no concern from the Environmental Commission dated February 19th, 2020. Um, it'll, the project will connect the public water and sewer facilities. We should have some testimony, uh, from the applicant regarding, uh, site utilization and proposed operations. Um, I think we all know, um, how these mini warehouse or mini storage facilities, you know, function, and I don't see anything, um, different in this, this application, but some testimony from the applicant, just, you know, um, supporting that, um, conclusion or opinion. A traffic impact analysis is required, um, and, uh, has been provided, so the applicant should, you know, review the, um, uh, results of that, uh, study with the, with the board. Uh, site access is provided by our driveway connections to County Line Road, uh, as its county roadway facility. Um, a review and approval from the county planning board or engineering department will be required, but we have no exception or take no exceptions to the, um, the, or to the, um, uh, driveway connections that are proposed. Site circulation is acceptable. Really, the, um, the major issue with the application relates to, um, onsite parking. 72 spaces are required and 17 spaces are provided. So, again, some testimony from the applicant in support of that, that design waiver request. Uh, the applicant should also discuss what improvements are proposed for County Line Road. Um, any waiver for curbs and sidewalks that may be granted should be conditioned upon, uh, contribution to the pedestrian safety fund. We take no exceptions to the grading and drainage design, uh, lighting and landscaping. Also, we find to be adequate. Um, during the course of the application, I did have a call from an adjacent property owner, um, indicating that they would, uh, for a fence versus the screening that was, um, originally proposed, but I'm sure the applicant will get into the specifics of that, but if, if the residence and then the, uh, adjoining property owner went it one way, then I really have no problem with him, you know, granting that, although I don't think there's a, a waiver that's, um, generated by that. We provided some technical comments to the, um, to the applicant, except for the, uh, parking issue. Um, that's all for now.
I just want to add that, uh, at least our initial review indicated that there was a discrepancy between the height of the building and the architectural plans.
Right.
And in the site plan, I'm sure they'll get into that, but I just wanted to add that to there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it okay if, I just find it so hard to talk.
Absolutely.
And it, I appreciate the accommodation, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Cleve, the one thing that I wanted to get clear with the board, um, is that it's our understanding that the HC Zone was amended in, uh, 2002 to permit mini warehousing and self-storage as a principally permitted use. Uh, that was done by ordinance number 50-02. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I apologize. I'm Henry Kent Smith. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild, and I am the applicant's attorney tonight, and quite frankly, Mr. Cleve did such a fabulous job of kind of doing what I was going to say, then I just jumped right into it, so I apologize. Yes, he does an excellent job. So, I am the applicant's attorney with Fox Rothschild, um, and to just, uh, get back into, uh, the, the flow of the way this should be going. So, I have Kyle McManus, who is our professional engineer, um, from Bowler Engineering. He will testify on all the site plan aspects and many of the aspects of the details of the site. Mr. Uh, McKenna will, Kyle McKenna will, uh, take care of. Traffic will be addressed by Jared Dennan from Atlantic Traffic. Ben Paskeet is our architect. Now, Ben is out of state, and so I'm going to have him testify and do his exhibits remotely, and I think we've worked that out with the IT folks so that this should be able to, uh, flow, uh, fairly well. I also have John Williams. He is a principal with, uh, Safe Store, and, um, he's available to address any operational questions that the board may have. Uh, normally, I would have him start, but he's also remote, so I thought I would, uh, put him towards the end, uh, with Mr. Pasquet so that we do the remote testimony together. Uh, that way, I would start with, uh, Mr. McKenna as our site plan engineer. And then finally, our, uh, planner, Mr. Gordon Gemma, will be discussing with this board the proofs required for the variants for parking, as well as some of the other background related to the application for the board tonight. So, with that said, I do want to make sure that, um, I, my understanding of the ordinance, which was that the highway commercial zone had been amended in 2002 to principally permit mini warehousing and self-storage.
You must have a, yeah, more current ordinance than I, but that's what you tell me, then that's fine.
Yeah, it's actually, uh, under item number 33, under the, uh, principal permitted uses in the zone, it was amended December 23rd, 2002 by ordinance 50-02. So, uh, it's our position that we are principally permitted use.
And, and that's, and that's fine, but I guess at one point, um, this type of use was a, uh, was a conditional use. So, for the board's, you know, um, information, um, although it's not really required now as a conditional, as a conditional use because it's permitted, with the old standards did provide guidance for the board as far as, does this fit in?
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe some brief testimony as far as, you know, um, does it meet the area requirements?
Right, right.
Not necessary, but it might give the board an idea of, um, a better ideas to the, uh, development of the site.
Absolutely will, thank you very much. Okay, all right. So, um, with that, I'd actually like to start with, uh, Mr. McKenna. He is our professional engineer and then get into the site plan and site plan components of the application. You can stand at your podium. The microphone that works? Yes. Okay. So, if you could, please raise your right hand so that you can be sworn.
Mr. McKenna, do you sound me swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you ki- kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and give us your affiliation, please?
Sure, it's Kyle McKenna, M-C-K-E-N-N-A, uh, Bowler Engineering. Uh, the address of Bowler is 30 Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and, uh, provided professional testimony, uh, in front of planning boards and zoning boards throughout the state.
And, uh, in terms of your, um, experience, how many years have you been in, in, engineer?
Uh, I've been with Bowler for, um, a little over nine years.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, Mr. McKenna, you're responsible for the site plans that are before the board tonight. And, uh, can you just briefly describe the overview of the property, its location and general environment? And do you have an exhibit that you can reference for that?
I do, see, I'd like to, um, begin by presenting Exhibit A1 as an aerial exhibit.
Yes.
And I should note for the board as well, most of these exhibits, right, Mr. Smith, have been pre-marked as well.
They've all been pre-marked and they have been submitted, and, uh, I think you, we sent them in the PDF format that you could post them. Um, the reduced size copies were delivered, uh, prior. I think everybody should have those. Yes, that's it.
And so I've, um, put them on the board, Exhibit A1, uh, dated August 17th, 2020. It's an aerial exhibit of the site and the site surrounding areas. A reference north is to the top of the page. The site is, uh, known as Lot 42.03, Block 6501, approximately 3.5 acres in site, uh, in size. It's a previously developed site comprised of paved areas, uh, an overgrown area where the buil- a building previously stood, but it's since been demolished for many years. Uh, there's also some wooded areas, especially to the, the northwestern portion of the site and along the rear of the site, or to the north. The site is located within the highway commercial zone or the HC Zone. Uh, to the north is, uh, a strip of wooded land, also within the HC Zone with Solar Avenue and residential townhomes beyond.
Yeah, through the mask.
It's hard to, hard to talk, sorry about that. To the, to the east, the site is bordered by existing commercial uses within the HC Zone as well, uh, to the south by West County Line Road with residential uses in the Ardenine Zone beyond, and to the west by existing commercial, uh, zone, uh, uses within the HC Zone.
So, Mr. McKenna, if you would then, uh, let's talk about the, uh, application itself. You have prepared a site plan for the board's consideration, if you could, uh, identify that for the record?
This is a copy of, um, Site Plan Sheet C03, the site layout plan, which was actually submitted as part of the site plan application. Uh, this plan was last revised in October 2019.
And that was the set that was submitted to the board?
Correct, so this is the set that was submitted to the board, uh, the planning department, and has been reviewed by your professionals and it's referenced in the review letters that have been issued to date. Since, since the time that this, uh, plan was submitted, there have been comments received from other agencies, uh, including, uh, Ocean County Soil Conservation District, uh, the county planning department, as well as, uh, the, the fire official as well. So, we thought it'd be prudent, even though some of these changes that have, are reflected on our latest, uh, set of plans, we wanted to show and present those tonight, so what I have, what I'd like to present now is the, um, the latest version of Site Plan Sheet C03. The changes are very minor. If you put the two next to each other, it's pretty hard to tell the difference, honestly, but I'd like to just present that, um, plan tonight so that we're looking at the latest and greatest plan.
And that's, you've marked as Exhibit A3?
That'll be Exhibit A3.
So, utilizing Exhibit A3, can you walk the board through the proposal?
Mr. Smith, do you just tell us for the record, what's the last revision date on that?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
February 7th, 2020. Again, for reference, north is to the top of the page. And I'd like to just touch on some of the changes, and then I actually have a colorized version of this, uh, plan.
If you could just walk through the, the general, uh, overall circulation, building size, et cetera?
Sure. So, the, uh, the proposed improvements include a three-story self-storage facility, which, um, is a permitted use within the HC Zone. There are two driveways proposed along, uh, West County Line Road, the first of which is an entrance-only driveway along the southeast corner of the site. The second is located, uh, further west along the County Line Road frontage and is a full-movement driveway. Both the driveways and the interior, uh, drive aisles are 24 feet wide and have been designed with curb radii that'll accommodate emergency vehicles, fire trucks. And I guess to best describe the circulation of the site, if you were to, um, enter the site at the southeastern, uh, drive aisle, which is the entrance-only drive, driveway, you would come into the site into a two-way drive aisle. On your left would be, um, a parking area comprised of 10 parking spaces, which provide convenient access to the facility's, uh, office area and main entrance, which is located at the southeast corner of the building. Moving further north around the site in a counterclockwise direction, you would come on the, uh, come upon the first, um, loading area. It's, uh, delineated by a cross-hatched area. Uh, there's a canopy off the building, and it provides a double-door, uh, flush access into the building for customers to load and unload their items. Uh, this, this loading area is a common, is, uh, designed to accommodate a range of vehicles from a passenger car to, uh, a small box truck that you might use to, uh, to, to move or, um, unloading your, uh, storage unit. Circulating around the site, continuing, again, in a counterclockwise direction, uh, you'd approach the trash enclosure, which is at the northeast corner of the property. Uh, it's a 10-by-10 trash enclosure, uh, designed to accommodate any refuse or recycling that would, uh, be produced from use. Uh, there is a, a waiver, a design waiver noted in the, uh, planning review letter that we'd be requesting, uh, for not providing landscaping and curbing on three sides of the enclosure. If you look at the plans, we provide landscaping on two sides, which would be the, the north and west side of the enclosure, but there's essentially just striped pavement on the other two sides. Uh, continuing counterclockwise around the, the building, the second parking area comprised of seven parking spaces would be on your left, uh, with the sidewalk that provides access to the facility. Uh, continuing even further, you would come upon the second loading area, delineated by the cross-hatch striping. That, again, is very similar to the, uh, area described at the northeast corner. It's a double door with flush access into the building. Across the, uh, drive aisle from that access is another loading area, again, delineated by cross, uh, cross-hatch striping. And again, these, these loading areas are designed to accommodate a range of vehicles. And then moving, uh, again, counterclockwise or south towards the, uh, towards County Line Road, you would exit the site, and, um, as previously noted, the, the driveway at the southwest corner of the site is a full-movement driveway, so you could, you could, um, circulate the site in the opposite direction as well, uh, to what I just described.
So, Mr. McKenna, you also have a rendered, uh, exhibit, um, that we've pre-marked as, uh, Exhibit A4. Could we use that then to continue testimony?
So, this is, uh, Exhibit A4.
Last revision date is?
Uh, so this is, uh, this is a colorized version of the, the plan last revised, February 7th, 2020. It's, uh, dated, the exhibit is dated August 17th, 2020. It's essentially a colorized version of Exhibit A3. We batted the landscaping and also just removed some of the notes and text at the bottom of the page to, to make it a little easier and less, um, less busy.
So, um, we've talked then through the, the circulation on the site. Can you describe the landscaping?
Sure. So, there's a, quite a bit of landscaping proposed. There's, uh, approximately 320 trees being proposed throughout the site. 207 shrubs and, uh, 280 perennials and grasses. The, the bulk of the landscaping you'll notice is around the perimeter of the site, uh, to create, uh, a buffer, um, along the perimeter of the property.
So, the, uh, one question is, um, this property, um, there is a set of mature trees at the rear of the property. The property line is actually bisecting that, so there's some of the mature trees in the rear that are going to remain, and you show those through the darker green coloration, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Um, the trees you're referencing would be up in that eastern portion, uh, almost like a panhandle of the property.
And then adjacent to that property line, what kind of buffering do you provide?
Should, so there's a mix of, um, deciduous and, and evergreen trees. Specifically, uh, there's some red cedar and white spruce, I believe, um, that are, that have a planted height of roughly eight to 10 feet and ultimately mature somewhere, somewhere around 20 feet.
Now, um, how is this site illuminated?
So, for site lighting, there's, um, there's a mix of, uh, eight pole-mounted lights, uh, 20, um, I'm sorry, five canopy lights and 20 wall-mounted lights ranging, uh, the mounting height ranges between 14 feet and 24 feet, uh, which complies because in that, the maximum permitted height is actually 30 feet for mounting height of a light fixture. We, uh, we also comply with the, the, um, required lighting values outlined in the ordinance, uh, for just lighting throughout the site.
So, then there's no spillage of light from this facility off-site?
There, there is some spill, uh, of light off-site, but it's, it's below the threshold outlined by the town ordinance, which is half of a foot handle, so we do not exceed that. There's, it's very, very, uh, low levels of light at the property line.
So, um, if you could, then utilizing the same Exhibit, uh, A4, uh, describe the stormwater management facility and how we're handling stormwater?
Sure, so stormwater is going to be collected through, uh, inlets and conveyed to a, in, an above-ground infiltration and detention system along the western edge of the property. You'll see it, it's, um, it's colored, it's like a light green color along that western, uh, border. From there, the stormwater will be, uh, discharged into the county right-of-way, to an existing stormwater, uh, system within the county right-of-way.
And does this stormwater management facility meet the latest NJDEP design standards for both infiltration and, uh, uh, containment of the, uh, one- and two-year storms?
Uh, it, yes, the stormwater, uh, design meets criteria for quantity, quality, and recharge for, for the GEP.
Um, and, um, the other aspect of this application involves a parking variance. Can you describe, from your professional engineering perspective, the, uh, requirement of, uh, the warehouse and business, uh, parking standards versus what we're proposing? Um, there's a, a business office that has, uh, its parking standard in warehouse. Just discuss with the board then, uh, the parking requirements and, uh, what we're providing.
Sure, so depending on how you interpret the, the, the town ordinance, there's a parking requirement for between 72 or 136 spaces, uh, whereas we're proposing a total of 17 spaces, 16 standard parking spaces, and 188 compliant parking space. And it's not unusual with self-storage, we see this fairly often, um, just the, the nature of the use of self-storage is, uh, is, um, not all that high, high, highly intense or parking demand, and we do have, um, Mr. Dennan to provide further testimony on, on the adequacy of the, uh, the proposed parking, um, but to, in my experience, this would be, and, and the, uh, the applicant, uh, feels this is adequate parking for the proposed use.
So, then in your professional opinion, does the circulation and design of the site plan before the board tonight then meet the requirements, the standards of the ordinance except as we have described just now?
Uh, yes, with the exception of the, uh, the, the number of parking spaces required, uh, it complies in regard to loading spaces, parking stall size, uh, and, and other requirements.
Uh, now, Mr. McKenna, have you an opportunity to review the professional reports submitted to the board by the board's consultants?
I have.
And is there any aspect of those reports that you've, uh, are not in agreement with, or would you otherwise agree with the recommendations made in those reports?
Um, with the exception of the waiver for the trash enclosure, um, that I previously mentioned, I, I, I think that the comments, uh, from the planner and board engineer would, would generally be agreeable to the applicant.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, we would submit that these would be conditions of, uh, any action that this board would take to approve this application, and that would be part of our compliance obligation. So, I have no further questions for Mr. McKenna.
Have any, um, architectural elevation drawings of, I, uh, 25 years ago, I lived across the street from the site, so I'm well aware that there's a very large, um, residential community across the street, Brookwood 3. Uh, what, what will these buildings look like?
So.
From the facade?
So, Mr. Pasquet has a whole series of architectural facade elevations, and because he's remote, I'm going to leave him till later, so I, uh, but he has a full, there is, they start with Exhibit, uh, A5 through A9, which are all the elevations, colorize perspectives and all.
Excellent, thank you.
So, he'll, he'll testify, um, once we conclude our live witnesses.
Yeah, seeing this is a, a three-story building, it seems to me it's, um, it's more conducive to people going to store stuff, um, a number of, uh, self-store, um, locations also be used by businesses. You know, people put, uh, their lawn equipment in there and things like that, you know, they, they use it for, uh, on some assembly and stuff, you know, with the, so this is primarily for just people like myself storing things there. There's no business activity going on within those?
Yeah, that is correct. That i- it is a fully enclosed facility, and the architect will describe that, um, so it's not like your exterior immediate access that you see, the one-story, where you, you actually can see a fair amount of activity, the, uh, act, what I call active storage. This is much more what I would use, what you would use, you know, my, uh, my mother-in-law passed away a year ago, and we still have a self-storage with her furniture because we don't know what to do.
Yeah, when I saw the, um, the lack of, uh, a lot of access to it for parking.
Right.
You know, I kind of, I wanted to bring it up, that it's not the normal type we, we see where it's all one-story ranch-type with a broad, uh, avenue in front of it, where people will park their vehicles right in front.
That's correct. That's correct.
People will park, unload, and move their vehicles then.
Uh, yes, and it is a fully, uh, enclosed and, uh, air-conditioned heat so that, you know, documents and, and sensitive, uh, materials can be stored there, um, as a climate-controlled facility.
Now, for the office, is somebody going to be living on the premises or?
No.
Okay.
No, the, the, Mr. Thompson can discuss as we get to the remote portion of our presentation, you know, how that operates, but nobody's living there.
I can't see from the picture. Are there sidewalks along County Line Road proposed?
This plan does not propose sidewalks along County Line Road.
But you would be willing?
I know that was a comment from the, from the town. It's something we'd obviously have to vet, vet out with the county, but I don't think the applicant has any objection to providing sidewalks.
Thank you.
Proposed height is 35 feet. Three stories.
That is correct, and the architect will describe that modification and show the board the new elevations, or the elevations that we submitted to remedy the variance.
How many individual units are going to be inside of this building?
I would actually defer to the architect as to the specific number of units. I don't, I don't know exactly how many units are within the, within the building.
You don't know?
The storage units? I would, I would, the architect should be able to answer that question as far as how many units are provided.
See, that's what I'm getting at. I think that that should play a role in how many parking lots there would be. So do you have a formula that you use that you derive these numbers?
For the 17 parking spaces?
Yeah.
I don't have a formula, no. We do have a traffic consultant who can, can describe their justification for why they believe this is an adequate level of parking. And then also the, the applicant could describe from an operational perspective how that works and why they feel it's adequate.
So when you did these plans, who directed you on how many parking places?
It's a discussion between the applicant and the traffic consultant to determine, make a determination on what they feel the adequate level of parking would be for the site.
Mr. Chairman, maybe what we could do is go to the architect. I, I, I know I had said that I was going to lead the remote witnesses last, but that question really goes to the architecture of the facility, and he can describe that. Plus, the questions relative to the facade elevations seem relevant. If, with this board's indulgence, I could then have Ms. Paskett testify and go through all of those architectural number units, the whole layout and everything.
It's a concern.
I, I understand. That's why I thought, let's get that taken care of right away.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Williams. I'm, I'm not sure. I have my hand raised, and I was unmuted. I think I can address most of these concerns if, if it pleases the board.
Mr. Williams, let me do this. I'm going to have the architect testify, then I'm going to have you testify, but before we have any testimony given, we need everybody sworn who's going to present any testimony to the board. So let's start with Ben, and then Mr. Williams will get you on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just a couple of quick questions. And I don't know if Mr. McKenna's the right person to ask, the fencing issue of the landscaping behind?
Right. Mr. McKenna, that, sitting in front of you is a letter that was submitted by Community Investment Strategies dated August the 11th, 2020. It's from Barbara Shore, the Vice President. I believe the board has received a copy of this letter. Is that correct or not? If not, I'll have this, this letter marked. Okay, then let me, if I could then, let me mark this letter. This will be exhibit 11. Community Investment Strategies is the owner of the property directly behind this facility. It is an affordable housing development. Barbara Shore is the Vice President and operates that complex along with many others. She called me and then wrote a letter to me requesting that we provide a fence along the rear property line, which we're certainly agreeable with. You have an exhibit marked A10.
We have an exhibit A10.
Yes. Just identify A10 for the record.
This is exhibit A10. It is almost identical to exhibit A4. It's a colorized version of the site plan sheet, C03. And the primary differences between exhibit A4 and exhibit A10 are that exhibit A10 illustrates a red line along the rear.
Point that out to the board, because it's very difficult to see.
And it indicates, this line indicates a board-on-board fence. There's also a detail of the board-on-board fence for reference on the exhibit A10.
So, Mr. Chairman, we are in agreement that we'll work with our neighbors to install that fence right at the rear property line. We will be keeping the landscaping. There may be some adjustment to the landscape location because of the fence, but that our intent is to locate the fence on the property line. That they do.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to, back to your question as far as the, I guess the standards that were used as far as the required parking. We broke out the whole, the floor, total square footage that's proposed. There's a 675 square foot business office. We signed the ordinance standard for parking for a business office. The ordinance doesn't really address this type of use, self-storage, mini warehouse, whatever you want to call it, but they do have warehousing at one space for 1,500 square feet. 3.4 for the business office, 69 for the, for the warehouse. It comes up with, that's where the, so, and we're going to have some more testimony?
Yes, we will. We absolutely will. We'll have our planner and architect and our traffic engineer all discuss that aspect of the application.
Okay, thank you.
I also just wanted to add, at least per my letter, are you providing recycling on-site? Because at least our letter indicates that you would also need a waiver for that.
The, the enclosure is designed, I believe, Mr. McKenna, is it not, to have both containers, trash and recycling?
The enclosure is designed to accommodate both trash and recycling. I would defer to Mr. Williams as to the, the specifics about recycling collection and things like that.
Okay.
Interior to the building.
So with Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions for Mr. McKenna, I'd like to get our architect to testify, and then Mr. Williams. They are both remote.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Paskett, I don't know in terms of your getting your plans and making it him visible. Is there a way we can do that?
Can you guys see me? Can you hear me?
Ben, are you on camera? Do you have access?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on. Can you guys, can you hear, hear me or see me?
Well, they need to get my mug off the screen.
He said his video is off.
No, my video is on.
Video is off?
It says the host has stopped my video. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, so your message, Ben, is that the host is not letting you go on to, on screen?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
It says, no, I'm the host.
Try, try.
There we go. Can you see me now?
Not yet. There we go.
The future.
The future is a rock. So, Mr. Paskett, you're going to need to raise your right hand to be sworn.
Mr. Paskett, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, even though it is on the screen, and your affiliation?
My full name is Richard Paskett, P-A-S-Z-K-I-E-T. I'm the Architect of Record for Interplan LLC. Been a licensed architect for about six years, 15 years of experience. Educated at the University of Illinois at Chicago and master's degree at Illinois Institute of Technology.
And you are licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Right, yeah. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct.
And have you ever given testimony before a board in New Jersey?
Yeah, Coboken, for example, about a month ago.
And you were accepted as an expert in architecture?
Correct, I was.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for going to accept your qualifications. And you are responsible for the board tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so if you could then, we have an exhibit, and I'm going to put up the physical exhibits, and I don't know how you're going to manipulate this, but the exhibit is identified as A5.
Can I, can I share my screen? Is that a possibility?
Good, be able to.
Can you guys see my screen?
There we go.
Exhibit A5 dated 8/17/2020.
And just identify that exhibit in terms of what is being shown on exhibit A5.
Exhibit A5 are the exterior elevations, the southwest elevation, the southeast, the northeast, and the northwest. And I mean, what I'll do is I'll walk you through the elevations, explain the finishes, all that kind of thing. So the building is designed with a stone base, a stone water table. It's divided between these different architectural metal panels, a wider exposure here and more of a thinner exposure here. At the corners, we have this, I call it a luke-bon, but like a smooth sandwich aluminum or metal panel with different colors, aluminum storefront, and then this aluminum canopy. And you can see it here repeated on this corner. That's really about it. It's, it's a relatively simple building, but we think it looks good. And one thing to note is we limited the height to 35 feet, which I know there was a bit of a discrepancy the first time around. All the mechanical units are located on the roof, and they are screened by the parapet. It's not very big, but they're set back far enough where you shouldn't see them. And.
Ben, you go a sign on the building. Is that sign the appropriate size to scale?
Yes, that is the appropriate size to scale, and it meets the signage code.
Now, you have also prepared color elevations just to give a better idea what this actually looks like.
Yeah, it's a little, little bit easier that way.
So if we could start then with exhibit A6?
Exhibit A6. And this is the parking lot side, the, the side that faces the parking lot. So you can see these different architectural panels here, the wider exposure, the more the thinner, the blue smooth ones on the panel and the stone base down here, and then this prefab metal canopy and aluminum storefront. And this is the office entry you see here. And then back here is kind of the, the, I'm going to call it the customer entry, which is access via key code, key card 24/7.
And then you have another elevation. These are all dated August 17th, correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We're just kind of working our way around the building. So this is the, this is exhibit A7. This faces the street. Once again, you can see the architectural panels, the stone, the stone base, and then this kind of blue, blue corner with storefront. This is, I'm going to call it the, kind of the backside. This is another public or customer entry. You can see we have a different color to kind of denote it as a, as a customer entry. And then working our way, this is the other parking lot side and that same customer.
A9 then?
Yeah, I'm onto A9. The darker metal panel, which, you know, it denotes that public entry, a blue canopy up above, stone base, it's kind of the same materials on all four sides.
Now, with regard to the building itself, do you have building-mounted lighting as part of this over the entrances?
Say it again, it'd be a broke-up a little bit.
Lighting, building-mounted.
Yeah, you can see it right there. We have building, building-mounted lighting at all the entrances.
And is that, that's activated as people come in and out during nighttime, correct?
Correct, and I think there's a time clock as well to make sure that it's on when it needs to be, if it needs to be.
So internally then, in terms of how the, the internal layout of the building, can you just describe that to the board?
Yeah, it's like we said, it's made up of three floors with these different-sized storage units. There's 819 units of varying sizes, and the reason for the different sizes is not everybody needs a big, you know, some people need something smaller, some, some people need something larger. I think I mentioned earlier, it's 24, 24/7 card access, so people can come and go as they please, but they need the, the security card to get in, fully sprinkled, building fire alarm, things like that.
And it's fully climate-controlled?
Well, yes, fully climate-controlled, correct.
And in terms of just your experience in designing these types of facilities with the, was it 817, did you say?
819.
819. The 819 storage units. With regard to how those units are accessed, as an architect, how do you plan for people coming in and out and their circulation in and out of that building with that number of units?
There's, there's corridors that allow people to circulate throughout the building all the way around. There are centralized stairwells and elevators to help people get in and out as needed. And we try to limit corridors when we can, things like that.
Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Paskett.
Did I hear it say that this is going to have 24-by-7 access?
24 hours, seven days a week key access. So in other words, you can access this building at any time, but you have to have a key entry in order to gain access to the building. Is that correct, Mr. Paskett?
That is correct.
So that means that you have to be coming with trucks at 3 o'clock in the morning, and most of the trucks?
Let me have Mr. Williams address that specific operational question. That's not so much architecture as it is operation. Mr. Williams will be my next witness. We'll, we'll, we'll just hold that question for five minutes.
The, the proposed building sign, that's going to conform to ordinance standards, yes?
Correct.
Thank you.
Easy answer.
Yeah, keep them coming. I can do those all.
Are there any other questions for the? You said all the ventilation is on the, all the HVAC is on the roof, correct?
Correct.
Access to the roof on the inside of the building is accessible?
Yeah, there's a roof hatch. And it's, to be clear, there's, there's split system, so just the condensers are on the roof.
And there's access from the inside of the building to the roof?
Yes, correct.
It's accessible to the public, or, I mean?
No, 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 not to the public. It's, it's all locked and only accessible by, you know, staff and maintenance as needed. Yeah, we don't, public does not have roof access.
Ben, you have to speak up.
The public does not have roof access. Only staff and the maintenance crew or team will have access to the roof. Oh, that was three shots, but I.
Well, yeah, it, it's a regulated access point in which the maintenance personnel only and staff have access. So that would be included in terms of, I don't know what kind of lock system would be applied to, for emergency personnel. Ben, would you know in terms of, is there a Knox box or something equivalent to that that emergency personnel would gain access in case there was a fire and the condensers up on top of the building?
Correct, yes. There'd be a Knox box, and whatever requirements that the, the local fire marshal has, we would conform with.
Yeah, I, I know, they, you guys have to speak up. You have to speak up. Because it's very hard to hear you in this, in this room. So it does have, you will have a, an emergency access that would allow emergency services to access the roof in the event of an emergency, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And I apologize, I'm having a difficult time hearing myself.
Mr. Williams is about to testify as soon as Mr. Paskett is done.
I have a question regarding parking, I believe.
I have a question regarding parking, I believe this is when we would talk about it. So how seventeen spaces as it relates to the eight hundred and eighteen storage units was calculated, storage, things like that.
So Mr. Williams will give you a little more insight on that, but Mr. Paskett, in terms of your experience as an architect in designing these types of facilities, does the seventeen parking spaces that are being proposed, is that adequate for the, for this building and this number of storage units?
Yes, in my experience, it is adequate, yeah.
Um, Mr. Williams will discuss that. No, yeah, I, Mr. Williams, he's the operational witness, so I can have him testify on that. If there are no other questions for Mr. Paskett, I would like to then have Mr. Williams testify. John, are you able to link in?
I think that, I think your administrator's gonna have to turn my camera on, but I, I, I can unmute myself.
All right, we, we hear you well, Mr. Williams, now we just gotta get your camera to work. And if you'll bear with us, we're doing that as we speak.
Sure.
Does your computer, John, say anything relative to any message on your camera status? I'm just curious.
Let's see.
Because I think you should be able
I might, I might have it now.
Yeah, you, you, we have a screen share now, so there you go.
All right.
Hello, Mr. Williams, how are you?
I'm good, how are you all tonight?
You are doing quite well. You're gonna need to raise your right hand and be sworn.
Mr. Williams, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you kindly give us your full name, your past and your affiliation, please?
My name's John Williams, I am a partner in Safe Store and I'm also the owner of WNA Engineering. And we do all of the Safe Store projects across the country in conjunction with local civils and architects. And my address is two twelve Marion Drive, Athens, Georgia, three oh six oh six.
And as the applicant's representative, you're fully aware of all the operational issues relative to this particular facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so why don't you just describe briefly then, your, you know, why this location, your target market and what you're providing to the public in Jackson?
Certainly. Gentlemen, we started, my partner Andrew Young and I started Safe Store about three and a half years ago. We currently have about six operational facilities, a couple more about to be in operation, another ten or twelve under construction, another ten or twelve in the pipeline. So we are a, a, a fully integrated storage company. We, we identify the property, we design the sites, we permit the sites, we build the sites. And then we hire one of the professional management companies to manage the sites for us. And in this case, you know, I, I tell people all the time, storage is not super complex when it comes to demand. It's basically an equation of, is there seven square feet of storage per person, per house in a five mile radius or is there not? And if there is not, then you build it and if there is, then you don't build it. And this, it's, it's about that simple. So we spend a lot of time, we've spent a lot of time and money developing proprietary software programs to be out, be able to give us the demographic data that we need to help us identify sites and locations. And I guess holes, if you will, you've heard of, you heard of the term food desert where you're missing a grocery store for people that need food, this is exactly the same thing. We find, we'll find an area where there's inadequate storage and storage is very, very localized. There's some real unique characteristics about it. Ninety percent of it these days, I, I believe is done online with booking. And then someone shows up at the facility, I haven't already booked the unit. It's usually a reactionary booking or response to, you know, a life, a life change. You know, an aunt dies, a divorce, something like that, the majority of the, the time. It's the, whoever's in, in charge of kind of the household finances is the one that says, hey, we gotta get a storage unit. I've been riding by this place every day going to work. I'm gonna get online and book a unit and they get online and they book a unit. And so we, we also find that because of the, the, the size of the buildings that we're, we're proposing here are, you know, at, at an appropriate scale, when they're shorter than, a little shorter than a traditional three-story building popping out at the thirty-five feet. But the size of them and the number of units that we're using enables us to be able to spend the extra money that it takes to, to deliver what we believe is a, a great product, you know, from a standpoint of aesthetics. Certainly far and away different than what traditional storage, I call them the old roll-up door caterpillars that you see, you know, riding down the side of the road. I think someone alluded to them earlier about how people rent them out for their lawnmowers and stuff like that. And there's none of this in, in this instant. We do have, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of our users are residential users, like I said. And the other, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, or twenty, twenty-five percent are probably business professional record-keeping type businesses that are storing records. Not, not storing, you know, inventory, not storing, not, not going in there and operating. There, there's no operational businesses running out of this.
So if you could then, Mr. Williams, the question the board's most concerned about is correlating the eight hundred nineteen units that you have in this facility, seventeen parking spaces. You have a great deal of experience in operating these types of facilities, correct?
I got a great deal of experience in operating these type of facilities, plus I own a civil engineering company that designs this type of facilities. And I've got a PTO, Certified Traffic Engineer on my staff that we do traffic studies in, in-house. So I know we have a traffic engineer expert, but I will tell you, I mean, from my, my facilities and operational experience, but also my experience in, in, as the CEO of a, you know, fifty-five person civil engineering firm, that this is more than adequate parking. We get those numbers, we, we don't pull them out of thin air. The, the parking numbers are directly associated with ITE trip gen numbers, trip generation numbers that we use to produce traffic studies and that we actually submitted to you guys. In this case, I mean, the math's pretty easy. I mean, the ITE manual for a similar sized building in a similar type location, we're generating ten or eleven trips on a peak hour. You know, you correlate that with like a drive-in bank that's, you know, a couple three hundred trips on a peak hour, we're at ten or eleven. Now, and, and those
Those ten or eleven trips, how long are they? How, you know, how often do people come?
Mr. Smith, excuse me, one, I just don't want to make clear and I appreciate the witness's credentials, but he is testifying based on his experience in operations.
Correct, he's not the traffic expert, we have the traffic expert who will do that expert testimony. So, Mr. Williams, if you could just talk about the, you know, how long do people stay at this type of?
They're, they're there for anywhere from, you know, ten to thirty minutes. I mean, occasionally they may be there a little bit longer when they leave. But I think it's important to note too, and I think, I think the traffic engineer will confirm this, those trips, when we say ten trips, I mean, that's one trip coming and one trip going, so that's five parking spaces that are taken up for a thirty-minute period of time or a twenty-minute period of time. And then we only have, you know, one or two staff members on, on site. Plus, we have the loading spaces where people are unloading, so, you know, nobody's loitering here. They're, the, the average customer, you know, once they come and they rent their unit and they unload there that one time, they may come back because they forgot, they need to go get a record, they need to get something out of their record storage or they need to go get, you know, they're, they're, they're adding, you know, a piece of fine china to their unit. I mean, they're running in, they're running out, they're using their key card, they're using their key code. They're not stopping by the office, you know, we're not, we don't have any retail stuff to speak of there. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's an in and an out and it's quick.
Let's talk real quickly then, you had, you said one or two employees, just describe your employee occupant. When are the employees there? How many are there? When are no employees on premises? Just talk a little bit about your employees.
I mean, it's a maximum of two employees there. I'd say there's some overlap, maybe at peak, at, at a more peak times or peak times of the year even. If, as, or, you know, during leasing, while we're leasing more up, but there's a maximum of two. Generally, I'd say it's probably one. And they're there, they're in normal business hours, eight to six. It, it, it varies from location to location and from a management company to management company, but, I mean, that's a general rule. I mean, they're, you know, nobody's living on site, nobody's staying on site.
So let's talk a bit about then the, the access to the building during off-hours and security. So when there are no employees there, how is the security of that building assured and how do you know it's secure?
I mean, we have, I mean, we have fairly sophisticated closed circuit cameras and stuff in the building that we're, that we're recording on the exterior access points and in all the hallways and corridors. But we also have a key code or card access on all of our buildings. So, you know, you can access them twenty-four hours a day. That is one of the beauties of this type of facility is that we can secure it and not, from the exterior and then the, the owners secure their, or the tenants secure their individual units, but they can come and go as they please to get what they want when they need it or, or put something in when they need it.
So in your experience, how much, what I would call late night activity do you get? Let's say between ten PM and six AM.
It's, it's minimal, I mean, five percent. Yeah, I mean, just.
And in terms of this facility, what's your anticipated leasing? Is that something that you would lease all hundred percent? What's your turnover rate? What, that type of activity, people who are moving in and out of units?
Pro forma for us on a standard unit, a standard sized building like this is, you know, we run a four-year pro forma for, for stabilization, which is ninety percent leased up. That's our pro forma, I will tell you that because we, we feel like we're really good at, we, we've been really fortunate and really good at picking sites because of the software that we use to help us pick the sites. Across the board on our portfolio right now, we're running fifty percent above pro forma on our lease up. So the majority of our sites will be leased up in probably two and a half to three years, you know, instead of, instead of the four that we originally predicted, which means nothing more than we, we are doing a very good job making sure that we're, we're finding those holes where storage is a need. And, and that's, that's in every project in our portfolio right now that that's happening.
So then in terms of that volume of what I would call lease up activity and turnover, you're talking about one or two units per day? That accurate?
Well, I mean, if you, you know, if you, fifty-two weeks in a year, two hundred weeks total in four years, if it was pro forma, then, you know, you're leasing four units a week.
I wanted that.
And we're, and we're leasing, you know, maybe five or six, so, yeah.
Now, you heard a question earlier about how you handle the recycling? Because I imagine as a storage facility, you get a lot of paper, you know.
How do we handle what?
Recycling of
Oh, yeah, I mean, we have this, but we don't have any issues, we'll, we'll comply with the towns code as far as recycling goes. I mean, they'll have, you know, the office itself will have a recycling, you know, basket, waste baskets and stuff like that. And then, like, like you heard from our local engineer, I mean, we'll have a recycling dumpster facility out there in our area for our patrons to be able to utilize.
Um, I think I covered everybody's questions, but if anybody has any other questions, I don't have any more. I think I covered most of them.
I have one other thing I'd like to say, if that's okay. From an operational standpoint and a, and a, and a community partner standpoint, I just want to let you guys know that, you know, when we established this company, we decide, decided to try to be the best storage company that we, that, that in, in the country and, and, and really give back to communities. And most people look at storage and say, well, you know, what can you do for the community? And so we searched kind of long and hard and you'll see in this plan particularly where we, you know, we, we upgraded and enhanced the landscaping. We've agreed to put in the fence in the back that the neighbor wanted to readily, no questions asked, that's what they want, we're able to do, happy to do it. But beyond that, we do two things in all of our facilities that we, we believe make us a good corporate citizen for your community. One of the things we'll do is we'll set aside three of our units in each building that we build for a charitable organization to be able to go out and find people in need. If it's somebody's house is burned down or, you know, we'll work with a local church. In Baltimore, we worked with a place called the House of Ruth, about a women's facility so that they can store, you know, women's articles and things like that when they have to move away from a, a bad relationship. And then the, the next thing we do is we, and, and this is a complete, if you guys want it or if your police chief wants it, we have the ability in all of our facilities to give you a police substation that's accessible by your police twenty-four hours a day and it's simply a, a small room. They're usually about eight by ten or ten by ten, you know, a couple folding tables in there, coffee pot. You got access to wifi, they can go in and fill out police reports, you know, get a cup of coffee. And that, and, and they can access those, those units are accessible to them, that unit is accessible to them twenty-four hours a day in our facility. And we'll also post a sign, should you want us to, again, on the exterior of the building saying this is a police substation location and, and have that. So just a couple of things, we try to do a little better, a little different and, and wanna make sure you guys are aware that we're excited to be a part of your community and, and look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, Fireman, Mr. Smith, under the theory of trust but verified, I appreciate the witnesses' good graces. I, would you object to those being conditions of, of approval, should the board approve the application?
So the police substation?
Subject to the police chief's review, obviously, and the three
And the three community, what we'll call community storage for charitable purposes? Mr. Williams?
I have absolutely no objection to that. I mean, if you look on our website, you'll see that's something that we actually say we're gonna do, I'm happy to do that. What we ask is for either someone on your board or someone on your staff to give us some recommendations for the charitable organization. We don't, we don't want to be in the business of trying to find the people that need to help. We want to find an organization that helps the people and let them, and just say, here's, these are your three units. We ask them to turn them over once a year so nobody puts their stuff in there and leaves them for years and years and years. But, you know, it could be a local church, it could be a, like I said, a homeless shelter, it, it doesn't matter. If you just give me the name and the information, we'll get in touch with them when we get close to being done and we'll, we'll welcome it into our building.
Record, thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Williams?
Williams, I know you touched on this earlier, but can your clients or your renters store any type of merchandise or material in there? Or is there a prohibition on certain things?
There's a prohibition on certain things, I mean, obviously, you know, explosives and, and, and things like that. I mean, these guys, that's, that's the great thing about us using the professionally, professional management company. I mean, keep smart. I mean, they manage hundreds of facilities, live storage, same thing, say, extra space, same thing. I mean, so they have a very set lease agreement, can and can'ts, the way they monitor that, the ability to go in and check forward if they, if they suspect, I mean, it, it, it's all baked in and, and we don't have any issues near our facilities with people doing that. So yes, they, they, there are restrictions on what people can put in there.
And the second question I had, is there gonna be any outdoor rental spaces?
No, sir. Everything is accessible on this and, and there's no spaces, you know, occasionally you'll see a, a facility like this that'll have an extra twenty parking spaces and they'll, they'll put outside storage for boat, RV, kind of stuff like that. Here, that's not, we have none of that, there'll be nothing outside beyond what you saw on those renderings, which is landscaping and, you know, landscaping our attention upon and our parking spaces.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question, you had mentioned that most of it is for record retention records for businesses that they have to keep and there's not a lot of access. That's why I questioned the need for twenty-four by seven access to the building. Is that really necessary?
I can't actually hear that speaker at, at all on my end.
Question is this, Mr. Williams, why twenty-four seven operation and access to the building? Why do you need to have that? What is critical about that to your business operation?
Even though there's only a small percentage of people that use it, that, that, that seems to be the, the actual trend for the industry and, and, and to be competitive and to get that extra five or ten percent of the clients that, that do want to have that availability. And it's a convenience, it, it's a convenience for people. I mean, I own a storage unit and, you know, the exact same scenario. I mean, I, I, I was divorced five years ago, I had to put some stuff in a storage unit and I rented a storage unit in our, in our hometown. And, and I have been there after hours when I needed to find a, a document or a paperwork or something like that. So people will just, in today So people just, in today's world and today's society, with the security, the electronics, the surveillance, everything like that, I mean, people want to have access to their stuff. And I it to say that we wouldn't allow that would be really to put put us at a a disadvantage where people wouldn't want to to.
See, my additional concern is that during these off hours, you're not going to have staff. People are going to have card access. So how do you control the loading and unloading of whatever it may be at 3 o'clock in the morning with a residential area right behind this? I don't know if anybody else has the same concerns I do.
We just haven't had that, any issues with any of our, any of our buildings in that in that scenario. I haven't received one call from one community of any of the six or eight buildings we have in operation right now of 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 having an issue with with that. And we do have some other buildings that are adjacent to residential, but.
So let's talk a little bit about your security, though. You have a camera and 24/7 security footage.
Yeah, we do. We have security footage inside and outside. So, I mean, there's, there's, you can see what people are bringing in, but you can also see who's coming to the door.
Right. And then that can be reviewed in the, in if the event that there was a complaint, then that you would immediately be able to identify what the problem is by the time index on the tape, right?
Yeah, that's stored on onsite and offsite servers, backed up on offsite servers. So we, you know, we have that that information. So if something does happen, we're able to easily identify, you know, who that person is. And then there, if they're in violation of their lease agreement, then that then they are vacated at the premises.
And, Mr. Williams, then each individual unit has its own code and lock system so that once you're in the building, you couldn't access anybody else's unit.
No, most of the, they're actually, the individual units are hard keyed. So you got to have, you got to actually have a key in most cases. There are some, we we haven't, they're just starting to come out with some electronic stuff for that. But for the most part, it's a bolt lock on the end, you know, like a a slide bolt lock with a with a with an individual key. So you got to have your key code access and you have to have your key to get inside of your unit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to to your point, perhaps there may be a middle ground where you have a prohibition by vehicle type, for example, an exception for box trucks and other types of larger vehicles that have reverse warning sounds and things of that nature. To the extent that there are anecdotal, you know, visits that people want to get to their things, perhaps there might be a prohibition on larger trucks or trailers or that kind of thing. Or maybe not, but I'm just bringing that up as if the if the question is just having access to your items as opposed to a full load unload at 2:00 in the morning by vehicle size. Maybe that's onerous, maybe it's unreasonable, but that may be a potential discussion point if there's a size limitation on.
So, Mr. Williams, did you hear the conversation just now?
I did. I mean, certainly we prefer not to have that if possible, but if that's the wishes of the board and that's the, and that's kind of the the lynchpin that that helps us get through our approvals, then we'd be willing to talk about something like that. You know, I will remind the board that our, you know, we we don't have semi trucks accessing this. I mean, we, it's the box trucks that you rent from like U-Haul or and and I I don't, I don't think a lot of them have reverse. Some of them may. I'm not gonna, I'm not an expert in that, but.
Either, but we have one that's sitting here that might be able to help us out in terms of when you would have the reverse actuated beeper. Because that's what I think the concern is, is that a larger truck has, you put it. Right.
So, you know, I'd like to throw out, you know, from 11 till 7:00 AM, no trucks.
How about 6:00 AM? Because we get a lot of morning activity.
Yeah. Before work.
So what we will do is I'm going to have the traffic engineer testify and our planner testify, and then we'll go back to to the board's consideration. And that will give Mr. Williams some time to think through this and give us any final comment on his end.
It it would also help us define what a truck is.
Right, that's what I want, Mr. Gertner, absolutely. The problem I'm having is what size vehicle are we talking about?
Because you need to enforce, be able to enforce this.
Right, right, right. So I think talking through with Mr. Denon will be able to help us on this, I hope. Are there any other questions for Mr. Williams?
Question, I do have a question for Bob. And I'm not fighting with you on this, but have we imposed this restriction on any of any others, any of the other facilities we have in town?
I don't think we have very many businesses come to us that are operating 24/7.
Well, we have to, we have this, the one facility by Sunset, Retirement House. We have the other one just approved behind Tracy. I don't remember putting any restrictions on them.
In their statement of operations, they gave us time, 24/7.
I'm not sure I'm gonna, I'm not sure I'm gonna agree with that. I'd have to go back and check. But they're all, both of them are operational 24/7.
Well, but gentlemen, I just remind each of you that each application stands on.
I'm just going to say we have, we have previous.
Yeah, I just got one question for the gentleman. Trash pickup is just going to be standard commercial trash pickup as any other facility would be?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, the access, key access, is that, if I'm a customer with my key, I can go to the loading dock or I can go to a man door, either way?
Yeah, we don't have, we we don't use a below grade loading dock. So when we say a loading area, our truck should just back up next to the door. So because we don't use, because we don't have big trucks. That's the whole thing. Like, we, all the trucks are, they're not the four foot tall semi trucks. So, I mean, we have a kind of an at grade loading area and then those doors are operated by keypad. And then, you know, the the like the door that comes out of the staircase or something, we also have a keypad on it. But but almost exclusively, the entry goes in through the sliding doors. Entry and exit through the sliding doors is the same ones you load and unload on.
The, most of the deliveries come from the the loading zones?
Yes.
You know, versus one of the man doors?
Correct.
And if I'm a customer and I have files or whatever I'm storing, I know what I have. I need to bring a tan truck or a dolly, that's on on me or the the customer to bring it.
We, there, there's a, there's a a couple of loading and unloading. They they usually put a couple at each elevator, which are just these kind of a, not a dolly in a sense, like you would move over a refrigerator with a one more like, like a little, like a little flat, like we'd see in a grocery store. And and they'll put a couple of those out at each elevator. And then you go, so they're inside. You open the door, you go in, you grab a little, you little trolley or whatever. You bring it out of your car, you put your records on it and you take it in and then you leave it outside the elevator.
But they'll be required to bring the dolly or whatever equipment is back into the facility?
Yes. I mean.
And if they don't, they're on tape, Mr. Cle. And we'll know who they are.
And the other comment relates to, I think the board's concerned about the 24/7 operations. And I'm I'm just kind of throwing it out to, if it was to be approved, say, okay, 24/7, but you have to come back in two years after you've been operations, the visit with the board again to see if the representations that there's no problems, you know, really came, really came true. Board could probably require a bond be posted that would encourage them to come back so they can get the money and ask the board, can we continue the 24/7? Or do we want, or do we need some restrictions? If there's been complaints, the police department has things on record, it'd be pretty obvious whether it should maintain 24/7 or go to some type of modified hours. But I'll leave it to the board to make that call. I'm just throwing it out.
That's part of the whole police substation condition that we agreed to, which is that we do encourage, welcome the local police to be part of our facility as well as an area where they can do their paperwork even late at night. So to the extent that we have them present through a police substation, I think as long as the police are on top of everything, then I don't see any reason that would require us to come back. I I think that if there was an issue, then certainly the board could be alerted and that could be then a question that would require us to address that that specific issue with the board. But as long as the police, you know, they'll be there in the police substation, so.
What happens if the police don't want to use the substation?
Brief question. Is the police substation, as we're describing it, eight foot by 10 foot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can we, can we just perhaps define it?
Yes, the answer is yes. It's it's an eight by 10 room that would have internet access so that they could come in, sit at a a table. They would have the internet access that they could fill out whatever computer report or whatever they need to do there, you know, and and do that, be present in that room and.
And I certainly don't want to be dismissive, but an eight foot by 10 foot, as as generous as it may be, is highly unlikely to be considered a substation for a police department in a town that's 100 square miles with 95 police officers and growing. So, I mean, just wanted to make sure we were defining it properly.
Well, certainly we will be in contact with your police department and inquire from them as to what they would consider an appropriate facility in in this building to be able to be present and and help.
And we've actually, we've actually done substations like this in in areas in and around Baltimore and and other places that they did want them. And and maybe the nomenclature may be different in different areas. I mean, when when, what 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 this is, is a place for a patrolling officer to go in, pull their car into a parking spot, go in, use the restroom, grab a cup of coffee, sit down, fill out paperwork, hang out for 15, 20, 30, 45 minutes and leave. And and then it it's not a place where there's going to be like four or five police officers or eight police officers at one time. It is a, it is a stop and kind of go go thing. And it's, it has been used successfully in other communities. And I think it's going to be, it's usually 10 by 10. But, you know, essentially what we do is we convert a unit that's the closest, one of our storage units is the closest to our office. And we sheetrock it and we put a a regular door, a key door on there. And we have, you know, we put HVAC into that room. We wire it for electrical, we wire it for internet and and have a wifi password in there where they can utilize it.
So, Mr. Smith, two things, and listening to the testimony. Would the applicant be acceptable? Should the board approve this, that the substation would be a minimum? I heard Mr. Williams talk about 10 by 10.
Right.
Subject, obviously, to discussions with the chief of police or the police department. And if there's a way to work out the internals that they, if they need a larger space, it would be, you know.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't work that out with the police.
Yep.
And the second, just to follow up, just sort of a compromise following up on Mr. Cle and from the other comments. The board could, and I want to see if you all, first of all, if the board would be acceptable and then if you all would be acceptable to this. You could certainly condition approval on just a simple administrative review two years out with regard to police calls and and a review of the security system. That could be admin, that could be an administrative review of the process. And if some issue, it's similar to what Mr. Cle was talking about. But it wouldn't be quite as, I heard some objection to the bond and the hardness potentially to figure out how much that bond would be worth.
Right.
But if you had an affirmative obligation to report within that two years, you'd have a resolution compliance would have to stay open as to that issue for the two year period of time. But that's something that's easily marked, followed through. And certainly you would have an affirmative responsibility.
Mr. Williams, you hear all that?
Yeah, I can agree to that so long as we can agree that that only protect, that the only ramifications, should there be an issue, be that the 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 hours of operation for the trucks loading and unloading may be limited. What I can't agree to is that to be open ended where they, you could somehow revoke my permit because all my mortgage and lenders and equity and everything is tied to the ability for this facility to operate for a minimum of 20 years as a storage facility. So as long as we're talking about that reporting or that that, I guess, well, the administrative review, you know, if for some reason, and I don't think there's any way it's going to be negative, but if for some reason it was negative because there was noise complaints or whatever, then we go back and we set those unloading and unloading hours at, you know, between 6:00 and, between 11:00 and 6:00 AM, no trucks over 24 feet or whatever, 24 foot box truck, then yes, I can agree to that.
Just completely flipping the 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 subject, the board could limit the times that can operate. And after two or three years, if the applicant feels that, you know, this business needs that or there's been no impact, come back to the board. I believe it could be written into the resolution that the the coming back and asking for the 24/7 would be an administrative type, you know, application to the board. So he wouldn't be burdened with thousands of plans and application fees, that type of issue.
Mr. Cle, we really do need to have the 24/7 operation as as our initial marketing entry into the this area. I mean, I think the solution that Mr. Gertner has suggested is the appropriate one, which is an administrative review at the two year period. Are there issues or not? If there are no issues, we're good. If there are issues, then we'll address this with the board relative to the appropriate restrictions the board deems necessary at that point.
And and that's fine. I was just throwing it out as an as an option.
This is also the highway commercial zone. It's down the road from two 24 hour supermarkets. There's other 24 hour operational businesses along this road. I don't see a reason, I agree, I don't see a reason to curtail him at all. This, it was commercial before the cinema was destroyed. Had approvals for other shopping centers right where it is. I don't see why we could curtail this guy's business. But I disagree with you, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your testimony. And at this juncture, I'm going to move on to our traffic engineer.
All right, I'm going to cut my camera off then. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I appreciate your time.
So, Mr. Chairman, just so the board is fully aware, I know Mr. Smith is. The reason those two gentlemen, the accommodation was made to have those two gentlemen testify via Zoom was that because of the corporate nature of the applicant, it just made it easier for the applicant, quite frankly, in terms of all the quarantining issues.
Yes.
If they had to fly in, I just want to make sure folks understand that they were willing to do this, but they would lose at some point potentially, one of the, one of the folks, I think from Georgia, the gentleman just thought would have lost a whole month.
Right.
If he had come in. So Mr. Smith wanted me to make sure, one, that he forgot, but I'm remembering. He wanted me to make sure that y'all knew that they were willing to do that, but he also was thankful of the accommodation that the chairman and the board made.
Both Ms. Paskett and Mr. Williams are from states that are on the New Jersey quarantine list. And therefore, they would be quarantined here. You know, in other words, they wouldn't be able to return to Georgia or to Illinois. They would have to stay in New Jersey for 14 days. I think it's crazy times.
Important just for folks to understand that, I thought, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, then, then if you could please raise your right hand so you'd be sworn?
Certainly, I solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, please?
Certainly. My name is Jared Dinan, J E R R I D, Dinan, D I N N E N. I am a P E, P T O E, that's stands for Professional Traffic Operations Engineer. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I work for Atlantic Traffic and Design.
And, then, have you been accepted as a traffic expert before other boards in the state?
I have.
And you undertook an analysis of the proposal before the board tonight?
I have.
And you're intimately familiar then with the traffic generational aspects and traffic impacts associated with this project?
I am.
So I am submitting, Ms. Min, as a traffic engineer.
For the board's acceptance, I have brought with me the I T E land use description of a miniature warehouse, which is land use 151, which is what we used for trip generation and parking generation, so if you'll indulge me. A miniature warehouse is the building in which a number of storage units or vaults are rented for the storage of goods. They are typically referred to as self-storage facilities. Each unit is physically separated from other units and access is usually provided through an overhead door or other common access point. So I just submit that this land use is appropriate for this type of facility. So, again, how the I T E, sorry, Institute of Transportation Engineers would study a site like this is they would collect data, entering and exiting trips off of a similar use. So, from all around the country, engineers would study the site via both trip generation and parking, so, and collect that information for other professionals to use around the As previously questioned, the amount of parking on site, there are 17 proposed parking stalls with 1 ADA, according to the I T parking generation, 10 stalls are required for a similar land use. Because this site, so let me just take a step back here, the I T E doesn't focus on number of units inside a storage facility, they focus on the total square footage, because some of those units could be broken up different sizes. So, based on that 104, as I mentioned before, we're only generating 10 AM peak hour trips and 18 PM peak hour trips. That's approximately one every three minutes, just to kind of put some perspective on this.
Eric, does he have any analysis relative to the size of vehicles? I'm just curious.
They they do not, but again, they they would take something very similar as, this is a typical use, so they would have U-hauls, which is supported by your loading zone size, but no, they didn't go into really a great amount of detail is how big a truck would use a facility license.
And relative to the impact on West County, do you have, in terms of an opinion relative to the relative impact of this specific proposal on traffic on that roadway?
Sure. As I stated before, we're we're generating less than 20 trips in any peak hour. That is a very minimal impact to any local road. As we are abutting West County line road, a county route, we're not going to have much impact to it during the peak hour.
So I have no further questions.
Yeah, parking, so as I mentioned before, the I T E parking generation manual said we have to have at least 10 parking stalls for a similarly sized development. We're providing 17, so we are providing an appropriate amount of parking for this land.
And that does not include the two designated loading entry points?
It does not, yes.
Just, just briefly, 17 spaces are, you know, are provided, but I'm looking at the site plan and this might go to one of Mr. McKenna, there is the ability to provide more, maybe not significantly more, but three or four spaces, you know, I'll say on the western side of the site, and I'm seeing the main driveway in, where parallel spaces adjacent to the main drive-in, you could provide some additional parking.
Yeah, I will defer that to Mr. McKenna. I'm not sure what the site could yield with banked parking or something, but according to I T, we're providing fair enough.
And again, again, I could have missed McKenna, but it it appears there's a the ability to get some more parking, whether it be green banked or actually built now.
Yeah, I'll defer that to Mr. McKenna.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is not related to parking, but the access to the facility, it's right in and right out, right in, right out?
Yes, so we have one right-in-only access and a full, a right-in, right-out access.
Wouldn't be right out, is your West County is?
Right, it's just right in, right out.
Only, only right turns coming in.
Right. That's correct, yes. But one access is right in only, that's all I'm trying to say.
That's the first one, right? Would be only in.
Correct, only in, on one access.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and really for Mr. Smith, it's another potential compromise position, particularly since it sounds like you're acceptable to coming back for administrative review in any event. Would the applicant be willing to design out and greenbank the balance of those parking spaces? You can greenbank them, you're well under impervious coverage, and then the board would have the opportunity to review that at maximum within two years. It's doesn't seem respectfully, and of course, this would be more for our professionals, it doesn't seem like a great additional expense. You'd have them greenbanked and designed already, and you'd have a you have a review already built in for the safety and security issue. Assuming, well, we'll find out.
Well, so, but the bottom line is that at this point, what we've engineered, if you were to put any parking, any additional parking, given where the stormwater management facility is located, you couldn't park along that facility just because of the basin. So, that's, and I don't know my orientation, but I think that's probably the northwest side, that has to stay because of the stormwater. So, if you were to look at like the areas to the back of the building facing the residence, you know, that's where we keep our landscape buffering, we don't really think it's appropriate to go back any further closer to the residence at the rear of the building. So it really just leaves the area to the southeast along that entryway, and you could take a look at that area for maybe parallel parking in terms of the southeast area.
Why don't you come up and use the?
Yeah, I, come on up. And I'm going to get reference to exhibit A10, just in terms of a potential area to even add parallel parking on what would be the the southeast section adjacent to the existing commercial, this area. Room there?
So, so personally, I, it's physically possible to fit it. The the negative or the detriment that would result from that is, you look around, there's almost nowhere on site where there isn't a tree or grass or a landscaped area, and then there's a bit of a domino effect as well, because just planning for doing parking and having more impervious surface, you also need to design and accommodate that with the stormwater infrastructure so that detention basin, which we have a fairly, fairly limited space, would have to be expanded. And I don't know, that may be feasible, but I'd have to evaluate that. But there is, there's a bit of a a snowball effect where it's not as quite as simple as just saying, hey, we could put parking over here.
And and can we put parking in the front yard setback at all?
No, that's, we wanted to keep the setbacks free and clear and green, that's what we.
I'm not, I'm not talking about, you know, the rear, and I would agree, we want to keep that, you know, as a buffer, but let's go to the basin side of the of the property. And in the, I'll say maybe northeast corner, where we have some landscaping, some green. Go up a little bit, no, closer to the building. Same thing there, and then all of that right there. A limit, as I think Mr. Gertner indicated, you're under an impervious, or under impervious coverage, so 27, 18, 27, some additional stalls there. You could also take a look, same type idea, on the other side of the loading zone, pick up a couple there, and I still don't really see an issue with the the parallel on the the other driveway, but again, if they're all.
Green space bank, right?
Yes, I mean, it's, it seems, it seems like it's feasible, like I said, that the, while it's a relatively minor increase, we would need to look at the pipes, the way that we design the stormwater system is specific to this exact impervious cover, so it's not something I can say with 100% certainty that we could accommodate, and I think just considering the fact that based on the traffic consultant's testimony, we're potentially seven spaces overparked plus three loading areas, it may.
According to I T E.
Yeah, so it it's kind of a cost benefit, it could, it could, you know, you are taking, potentially taking away impervious area, things like that, but it's probably phys, I would say it's physically possible to fit a couple of more spaces, obviously.
I'll, I'll leave it to the board, but, you know, it's possible.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and again, just as a suggestion, trying to have an idea upfront of what the maximum parking yield could could be, the suggestion, and I apologize, Mr. Smith, I'm doing what you you are, your owner did, I'm using my planning degree, but I'm not licensed, so don't take this as expert testimony, but what we can do, if the board would be so inclined to approve the application, is just condition this step during resolution compliance with design standards, the board in theory would have this extra parking in its back pocket and have a trigger on this two-year period to view what what occurs.
Yeah, Mr. Gertner, I think that's a great idea, because what that does is that would enable us to then just pencil it out, make sure it worked from a stormwater management as part of our plan compliance, then submit that as part of our compliance package and say, here's what the additional parking would look like, where it would be located, and it's designed and accommodated within the stormwater system, so that that would just be green-spaced parking. So I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
You may not even have to come back to the board if the trigger can be established, where the zoning officer or the township engineer felt it was time to put these in, he notifies you, you know, the resolution says if he notifies you, you agree to put them in, you may not even have to come back.
Yeah, that's a, that's pretty standard, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, which you just came up with, because after several years, you may find you don't need extra parking.
Right.
And it's basically just penciled in, you don't have to do anything to it.
Right, and and your enforcement officer can say, oh, gosh, I've just seen people parking all over this place, you know, you need to add the parking, we've already got a design, it's just a matter of getting a contract there out there and and finishing the job. Any further questions for Mr. Dinan?
Got a question. What does I T E say is the square footage requirement of parking for a mini storage facility?
Could you repeat the question?
What does I T E say is the square footage parking requirement for a mini warehouse building?
So the the rate for I T E parking is between .09 to .1 per thousand square feet, so it's very low.
What was that again, point?
.09 to .1. I don't have the actual.
Thousand, so it's one stall per 10,000, right?
Yeah.
If I could do math faster than you, we're all entrapped.
Wait, but you just said?
.09 to .1 per thousand.
Oh, .09.
So it's one per 10,000, one stall per 10,000.
All right.
Thank you very much. My last witness tonight is Gordon Gemma, he will be our professional planner. Raise your right hand, please.
Mr. Gemma, good evening. I solemnly swear affirm that testimony about to give is the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation.
Gordon Gemma, G E M M A, I'm a licensed professional planner, having an address of 68 Seneca Place, if I take the stupid thing off. Thank you. Although I sound much better when you can't hear me, I make more sense at least.
So, Mr. Gemma, you are are still a licensed professional planner, stay in New Jersey?
As far as I can tell.
And you've previously testified in front of this board?
I have.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just dispense with preliminaries, Mr. Gemma, did you take a look at and evaluate the applications for the board tonight?
Yes, I did.
And can you just describe to the board what it is that you evaluated relative to this application?
Sure, I had the chance to look at the ordinances, I looked at your master plan, I listened to the experts on the applicant, and I saw the exhibits that they put together.
Now, based, sure, based on that analysis, did you identify any positive relief required in terms of variances for this application?
Yes, I did, but let me just go through a few things if I could, Henry.
Sure.
And this is one of these rare times I can listen to both the, you're the board's expert and Henry, and say, yes, both are right, when they ask the question of conditional versus permitted use, and it's going to go to an issue. Because Henry's right, in your ordinances, it's listed, mini warehouse has a permitted use. And it's also listed in the same section, section C instead of section A, as a conditional use. Now, why is that? Because in 201991, when you wrote the ordinance, it was a conditional use. In 2002, when you had added a permitted use, you forgot to take it out of the conditional section, so it's both. But to go to your question, does it meet the requirements for a conditional use, the answer is yes. Okay, so whether you call it permitted use or conditional use, both, you are right. But that also goes to something else, and that is really, and this is an argument for Sean and for Henry, what is it the relief that we're asking? We call these variances, the parking variances, but just bring this up, because actually in your ordinance, under section, and your planner's nodding yes, section 244-197, Article 12, that's where you call it, design standards and improvement sections. So you're, actually, your parking requirements are under what you call design standards. Normally, a design standard is a waiver, it's not a variance. Nevertheless, I think you meet the requirements for a variance, but I just wanted to bring that up, because there's something else that you should take into account, and that is the problem that you have tonight. And the problem you have tonight is there really isn't a standard for parking for mini warehouses. You don't even have a definition of mini warehouses than the definitional section of your ordinance. In fact, what you do have is you have, mini warehouses are permitted use under section 24457A33, your parking standards are 244197N, and in N, you have a whole list of parking, of uses that generate parking. The closest thing your your engineer tried to do is say, well, maybe it's a warehouse. And a warehouse had 70-plus spaces. But the reality is, the way you define that, says a warehouse also includes the sale and retail sale of heavy equipment. Well, whatever's going on in this place, I could probably tell you they're not selling heavy equipment here. So the real issue you have is what is the standard that I apply, what makes sense? And the applicant has pretty much said to you, well, why don't you try to apply the I T E standards? This is the closest thing you have. And unfortunately, in moments like this, boards like yourself are not left with a lot to go with. So you have to go with your intelligence, your common sense, you have to rely upon the expert, and you have to rely upon what material is out there. The only material out there is I T standards that I could see. But you do have something else you can go on, and that is, what does your master plan tell you you should look at? What are my goals and objectives? What am I trying to accomplish? Unfortunately, your master plan has some language, and there are goals and objectives in C2 of your master plan, and it talks about encouraging good design standards, it talks about encouraging development in this commercial corridor, it talks about preserving your buffers, it talks about preserving open space. And the same, the same language is also found in municipal land use law, under section NJSA 4055D-2, which self-talks about good design criteria, creation and preservation of open space, getting a good visual environment, and that's really what you've been discussing tonight. All of you here have been trying to figure out, how do I have enough parking so it doesn't have a detrimental impact? At the same time, how do I have good design criteria? How do I have enough open space? How do I not impact the people to the rear? That's really the conundrum you have. And that conundrum lets you find variance relief under the C2 standard. The C2 standard is a flexible C2, is a flexible C, where the benefits outweigh any detriments. And here, the applicant has said, look, we're trying not to put in a lot of impervious cover. In fact, under the impervious coverage requirements that Sean was bringing up before, can you add more parking? Well, under your ordinance, you're permitted up to 75% of impervious coverage. The applicant here has only 57.93. Can they fit more spaces? Yeah, probably. Can they fit more spaces that make any sense and are usable? Probably not, because really, you don't want to have, just because you can fit them, you should put them there. In fact, your master plan and your, and the purposes of zoning say, if I don't How do I not impact the people to the rear? That's really the conundrum you have. And that conundrum lets you find variance relief under the C2 standard. The C2 standard is a flexible C, where the benefits outweigh any detriments. And here, the applicant has said, look, we're trying not to put in a lot of impervious cover. In fact, under the impervious coverage requirements that Sean was bringing up before, can you add more parking? Well, under your ordinance, you're permitted up to 75% of impervious coverage. The applicant here has only 57.93. Can they fit more spaces? Yeah, probably. Can they fit more spaces that make any sense and are usable? Probably not. Because really, you don't want to have, just because you can fit them, you should put them there. In fact, your master plan and the purposes of zoning say, if I don't need them, it's a better design alternative not to have more impervious coverage, particularly in this area, particularly in the H C. zone, where in the H C. zone, your master plan says, along this strip, the strip along the highway, try to preserve as much buffering as you can. So, it's a real battle you've been going back and forth with tonight. What makes the most sense? And I think that you have to, to a sense, rely upon the applicant's experts and the I T. standards, because they're the only ones left. Let's say you got enough. And if anybody really is impacted by not having enough parking, it's going to be the applicant, not you, because he's not going to have people going to that place. So, he's got more to lose, as they say, than anybody else here, because he's spending a lot of money building it. But the compromise that you had with Sean and your engineer made sense. Try to put a little more green space there, but if you don't need it, don't do it. Don't have an arbitrary standard that doesn't really have any real function drive bad design, because that's the antithesis of the C2 test. So, if you ask me, and I am being uncharacteristically brief tonight, and Sean knows that, and he probably is happy about that, but do I think that you meet the standards for the C2 test? I think you do. I think good design alternatives, the creation of open space, the preservation of open space, the preservation of buffers are a wonderful reason to avoid not putting something in and creating more adverse impacts. And you've done good things. You've done mitigative activities. If, in fact, they need more parking, we'll put a few more parking spaces in, but if they don't, don't do it. And because of that, I think you meet the C2 test. I don't think you need a C2 test. I think it's a design waiver, but nevertheless, I think that this applicant has done a lot to try to tell you this is the right type of use in the right location. They haven't maxed out. They've met all your setback, your size, your bulk criteria. So, the only standard they're seeking a variance from is for parking, and I think they've done it in a good manner.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Mr. Gemma? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. So, Mr. Chairman, at this juncture, we have concluded our direct presentation. I believe we have covered all of the issues and concerns raised by the board. I think Mr. Gertner has done a very good job of identifying the conditions of the resolution that we would ask this board to consider and approve tonight. If there are any other questions relative to any aspect of this application, we have everybody here. But otherwise, I believe we've covered this proposal in a very thorough manner, and that we ask that the board consider and grant the approval tonight for this proposal.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the residents. Christian, do we have anybody that's still awake out there?
And, Mr. Chairman, while he's looking, Mr. Smith, all your professionals are available for questions, right?
Yes.
Christian, I apologize. I'm speaking over you. May I just ask for the record, how many people other than the applicants are there? Not, okay.
Going once, twice? So? All in favor? Aye. Any other comments, questions?
Got one. What is the height of the proposed fence?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yes.
I believe it's six feet.
Sorry. Okay. We have a couple of items that I think we need to clarify for you.
Well, it appears we went, we went through them, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, if I may, just to make sure I don't miss anything, it sounds like the applicant has agreed to use that six-foot board-on-board fence along the property line with housing. The applicant has also agreed to provide, as an alternative, the green banking, basically just penciling them in, and tie in at least a two-year review with the similar review as to if there's any complaints with the trucks.
Correct.
The applicant has also agreed to provide at least three storage spaces for identified chatterable organizations within the municipality.
Correct.
And work through township administration and the clerk to review that. The applicant has also agreed, subject, obviously, to the police department, to a minimum 10 by 10 space. That doesn't mean if they can't work it out, they could utilize more for a, what they broadly termed a, excuse me, a police substation.
Correct.
But that's not, that's, so the condition is they have to provide at least that, but if, certainly if the police don't think that's necessary, we'd have to get a sign-off from the chief or the administrative officer, and then that could ultimately be waived.
Understood.
They've also agreed just to work with the fire marshal and fire department to deal with how, and we want to articulate that in resolution, how internal access to the roof will be provided, either through a Knox box or however that works, will be on my knowledge. But we can certainly articulate that, put that in the resolution. I think that's everything.
I think you got it.
If you add sidewalks to that, I'll make a motion.
So, they've agreed, they've agreed to, I apologize, you're right. They've agreed, it's a standard in any event, because there's a trust fund as well. But you've agreed to work with the municipal engineer and the county to ascertain whether to place sidewalks or to pay into the fund.
Correct.
In light of that, I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker? Mr. Nygro? Mr. Justwicki? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring? And Mr. Hudak?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We look forward to meeting your business community, and anybody who needs a storage spot, you know where to ask.
Thank you for your time, guys.
At this time, I'd like to close our meeting and go into a quick executive session, but I don't want the public waiting, so that's why I want to close our meeting and then go into an executive. So, can I get a motion for...
All in favor? Thank you.
So...